Welcome, everybody here tonight. Good to see a good crowd here as usual. We're going to start the meeting off with our pledge of allegiance. Everybody would stand. I have permission or Mark Speed lead us on.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag. The Constitution. The Constitution. It stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. All right. Our first item is our, item number one is our consent agenda. And I'm will pull out the first one, which is item E, which is our National Manufacturing Week, twenty twenty-four proclamation. And I'd like to read the proclamation. Franklin County Board of Commissioners proclamation, National Manufacturing Week, twenty twenty-four. Whereas manufacturing is a vital part of the economy of Franklin County, North Carolina, contributing one hundred and ninety million in total wages in twenty twenty-three to the prosperity, economic growth of the county. And whereas Franklin County, North Carolina is home to a diverse range of manufacturers with over twenty-six-hundred jobs producing goods that are essential to various industries. And whereas manufacturing in North Carolina represents the second largest industry in the state with over eleven thousand businesses and employing approximately four hundred and seventy thousand workers, contributing more than one hundred and nine billion to the state's gross domestic product. And whereas for every dollar spent in manufacturing, an additional a dollar eighty-one is generated for North Carolina's economy for every new one hundred direct manufacturing jobs. Seven hundred and forty new indirect jobs created showcasing the profound impact this sector has on economic development, community, community well-being. And whereas the manufacturing industry offers rewarding career opportunities for Franklin County, North Carolina residents from high-tech jobs in advanced manufacturing to critical roles in the production of essential goods. And whereas Franklin County, North Carolina remains committed to supporting the growth of manufacturing through investments in education and workforce development, ensuring our local workforce has the skills needed to thrive in the twenty-first century manufacturing jobs. And whereas National Manufacturing Week, celebrated from October fourth through the eleventh, twenty twenty-four, provides an opportunity to recognize the hard work and dedication of our local manufacturers and their employees and the significant positive contribution they make to our local economy and community. Now, therefore, the Franklin County, Franklin County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim, October fourth through October eleventh, twenty twenty-four, as Manufacturing Week in Franklin County, North Carolina, and commend its observance to all residents, urging the community to join and recognize in the importance of the manufacturing sector to our local and state economy. Do I hear a motion? To approve item E. All right. I hear a second, or a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to call down. I understand Ms. Barbara Fadari. Fadari is here with a small congregation of some manufacturers. If you'd come down to the front here for a picture-taking ceremony. I think we usually step outside to do that. So if you could come on down and we'll get ready for a picture-taking ceremony.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion if we pull item F from the consent agenda. Second the motion.
Item F?
Yes, sir.
Okay, been a motion made and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to remove item F. Okay, well, there any others?
And I'd like to make a motion to move H, I, and J so we can have further discussion.
Okay, been a motion made to remove H, I, and J. I'll second that. All right, been a motion made and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Is there any others? Go ahead and read through the remainder. Item A, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes. Item B, fiscal year twenty-five budget amendment number six. Item C, public safety radio system project budget amendment number one. Item D, Epsom Park Project Budget Amendment Number One. All right, we skip on down. Item G, revised tourism development authority, TDA bylaws. And then one at the very bottom, item K, fiscal year twenty-five wage and salary plans. Do I hear a motion? Been a motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're coming up to our main agenda item of the night. Item two is comments from the public. Our first citizen here, Jenna. I don't know, scared to try the same last name, but please excuse me. I get with you later on for venunciation there.
That's fine. Good evening all. Oh, sorry. My name is Jenna Kennick-Surfer. Address seven three one Rockville Road in Wake Forest. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I currently foster and volunteer with a local rescue organization. All of my personal pets, as well as my two current fosters, come from the Franklin County Animal Shelter. I wanted to take some time this evening to reflect on where we are currently and where we hope to be in the near future since the significant changes in animal shelter leadership and staff in the last two months. This is from the perspective of a member of the public, so if I am speaking incorrectly on anything, please correct me. I want to start with the positives this evening. It is great to hear that the shelter has recently hired several new animal care technicians and animal control officers guarding soon. I think many of us in the rescue community have seen a shift in euthanasia practices at the shelter with the use of euthanasia as a last resort, though we know this cannot always be avoided. During the Animal Services Advisory Board meetings, there is a spirit of wanting to improve processes and an openness to change, while previously the meetings felt like a hamster on a wheel going nowhere and achieving nothing. We are seeing animals being spayed and neutered and even a rescue donated heartworm testing kits so that we can start that process to implement what other surrounding shelters are currently doing. Now, I want to talk about a few areas for continued improvement. Technology. While we all have a love-hate relationship with it most days of the week, currently it is a tremendous hindrance in the shelter setting. We, as the public, are being told that there are connectivity issues and so many barriers to access social media and the database systems that we are creating more harm than good. There are significant delays in registering animals into the system. And if animals aren't in the database, they can't be adopted out, which just backs every other process up, from the medical to the behavior evaluations to fostering and rescue, and then ultimately the adoptions. There are workarounds to the technology issues. They exist in every profession. One idea, it's, one idea I had is if the network systems are slow, is to issue a laptop so that someone can work remotely to enter in the data. Yes, you will need to eat the cost of a two hundred dollar laptop, but that is what needs to happen if the technology challenges cannot be resolved. Currently, the ability for the shelter to network these animals has fallen onto the Friends of Franklin County Animals Facebook page, run by two members of the community, not the shelter. I repeat, these are not volunteers through the shelter. The Friends page on Facebook has a reach of eighteen hundred people. The Franklin County Animal Shelter Facebook page has a reach of forty-eight thousand people. If only one person can access from the shelter, the Franklin County Animal Shelter Facebook page, then start over, make three people the admin, and call it a day. We need to get these animals into the system and visible on social media ASAP. Speaking of volunteers, the shelter does not have a volunteer coordinator currently, but they didn't have one before either, so this can't be the excuse. We in the community questioned the need to create a full-time position for a volunteer coordinator, and the county voted otherwise. So now we are up the creek without a volunteer coordinator and thus no volunteers. The shelter should not be onboarding volunteers or employees without SOPs. You need SOPs. It's baffling that this has been going on for well over a year. It doesn't have to be perfect and can be modified as you progress, but if you are, if you are bringing on new employees and volunteers, this is critical to the success of that. There is a free and willing workforce, but they are losing interest in this delay. You even have a group of volunteers willing to help in the development of the SOPs who have shelter and leadership experience. We have a real golden opportunity here to start fresh, to set the standard for animal services in Franklin County, not just in the immediacy, but for several years to come. From outside appearances, it is looking as though it has stalled. Whether that has to do with staffing, experience, or a combination of other factors, Franklin County is changing. The population is changing and growing, and so is the amount of homeless animals. We need county and shelter leadership to step up and drive this new standard to bring animal services into twenty twenty-four. Let's not throw away that opportunity, or the county only has itself to blame for squandering such a gift. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott Strickland.
Forgive me for not getting up tonight. I had emergency surgery last Thursday. I'm lucky to still be here, but I'm here. Um, tonight I want to talk to you about Bun Cert. Bun Cert has been, since Helen had come through. And we've been doing a lot of stuff with our team, working out of the Youngsville Fire Department, making the NC two-eleven calls. We've been getting up donations at the Walmart. And we teamed up with the Franklinton Fire Department. We sent a load up through that. Um, we've been doing good. The next, the next thing I want to talk to you about, how many of y'all seen the emergency operation plan for Franklin County? This is something that we need to be thinking about. I understand that there, it's getting ready to be updated, but every chief, everybody's gonna have a seat at this table, needs to be sitting around a round table like we wrote this one way back when. And this is a serious thing right here. If you haven't seen it, you need to get one. This talks about everything that happens with what happened out West that happens here. What, how we're gonna do it, who's gonna do what, when we're gonna do it. This book right here tells it all. Randy Lichten's wrote this years ago. And now we're updating because we got new chiefs in place and stuff. And also each town, each town has a part in it. So that's something we need to be thinking about. Uh, with my group being with disaster preparedness and teaching folks what to do, this book's important to me. Because if we don't know how to do it and who's gonna do what, when it's gonna happen, um, how can we prepare them? So that's all, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I, I know some of you probably haven't seen it, but you need to get a copy of it and, and read it. It's a lot of good stuff in here. Um, this is what we call the Bible. Every, every town has, every town has one, and we got a copy and a mutual aid agreement with them through Franklin County. So it's really important that we look at this. Thank you for the time, and I just want to let you know how well my Cert group is going. Um, gained, gained a bunch of new members through, through this, and we're doing, we're doing good. But thank y'all.
All right, thank you. Moving to item three, action items. Section A is the twenty twenty-five UAC recommended utility allocations. Christopher Doherty, Public Utilities Director, will provide the board with the UAC or the Utilities Advisory Committee recommendations of approval of water and sewer allocation requests. Mr. Doherty?
Good evening. Uh, thank you for allowing me, uh, the time tonight to present to you the twenty twenty-five utility allocations. Each allocation presented tonight will be effective January first, twenty twenty-five, with a record date of their projects, January first, twenty twenty-seven. Now, each project that I present tonight will need a separate motion. Off we go. Uh, the, the first project is a request for Sutherland Station Phase Two. It's fifty units of an additional phase. It has met the thirty percent rule. It is within the county planning jurisdiction. The UAC recommended it unanimously at its September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting. And this project will have a January first, twenty twenty-seven record date.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
And a motion made?
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, item B.
Item B, it's a request for the farms at Rolling Meadows. It's for fifty units. It's a new project. It's in the Youngsville jurisdiction. The UAC unanimously, uh, made a recommendation for this project on our twenty-fifth of September meeting with a record date of January first, twenty twenty-seven.
What's the pleasure?
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion made and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C?
Item C is a request for Rolling Meadows East. It's a fifty units for a new project in the Youngsville jurisdiction. UAC made the recommendation to approve at its September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting with a record date of January first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
A motion made and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item D?
Item D is a request for Rolling Meadows West. It's a new project, fifty lots. It's within the Youngsville planning jurisdiction. UAC voted unanimously to recommend allocation at the September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting with a record date of January first, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion approved.
Second.
And a motion made and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item E?
Item E is a request for Fleming Village at Rolling Meadows. It's a new project. It is for fifty units. It's within the Youngsville planning jurisdiction. UAC recommended approval at its September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting with a record date of January first, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item F?
Item F is a request for the Greenbrook subdivision. It's a new project, fifty units. It's in the county planning jurisdiction. UAC, uh, voted unanimously to recommend approval at its September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting with a record date of January first, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion made and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, item G?
Item G is a request for Baker Farms subdivision. This is a new project. It is for fifty units. It is within the county's planning jurisdiction. UAC made a, the UAC made a recommendation to approve at its nine twenty-five, twenty twenty-four meeting with a record date of January first, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion approved.
Second.
Been a motion made and a second. Any discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item H?
Item H is a request for Hillcrest Phase Three subdivision. It is an additional phase of an existing project. This is for fifty units. This project has met the thirty percent rule. UAC recommended, uh, voted to recommend approval at its September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting with a record date of January first, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item I?
Item I is a request for Essex Towns Phase Two. It's an additional phase of an existing subdivision. It has met the thirty percent rule. It is within the Franklinton jurisdiction.
And a motion made and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item J?
Item J.
Item J?
Item J is a request for Essex Villages Phase Two. It's an additional phase of an existing project. It has met the thirty percent rule. This is for forty-three units. UAC voted unanimously to recommend approval at its nine twenty-five, twenty twenty-four meeting with a record date of January first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
Okay, been a motion made and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item K?
Item K is a request for Wiggins Village Phase Two. It's an additional phase of an existing project for twenty-three units. It has met the thirty percent rule. UAC voted unanimously, recommendation for allocation at its September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting with a record date of January first, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion approved.
Second.
Been a motion made and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And we're here to a non-residential allocation.
A non-residential allocation. This request is for the Holden Road Commercial Center. It is a new project within the Youngsville jurisdiction. You, and it is for eleven thousand five hundred and five gallons per day. It is, the UAC has voted unanimously to recommend approval at a September twenty twenty, twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting with a record date of January first, twenty twenty-one.
I hear a motion?
Second.
Been a motion made and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And I guess.
Thank you. That is.
Ask one question if I could.
Yes.
How much water we got left?
Well, for calendar year twenty twenty-five, uh, we allocated out not, a residential allocation of sixty-nine thousand six hundred gallons. And that leaves us a little over five thousand gallons for calendar year twenty twenty-five for administration. And that leaves us a little over 5,000 gallons for calendar year 2025 for administrative director approval. And then with the allocation for the non-residential, that's taken out of our non-residential bucket of what we have allocated through the ordinance of 250,000 gallons. And that will remain the same after we take this 11,000 out of it.
What's that leave left?
Overall, I would have to look at the census and let you know. I do not have that information with me tonight.
No roundabout? No, nothing.
I don't want to say anything and have it be wrong, so I need to look that up.
Anything else?
Just want to reiterate that your all's approval tonight for these allocations are effective January 1st, 2025. And when I send out my letters of award, it will say that. So they will not be able to start using any water until at least after that timeframe.
All right. Any other commissioners have questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. All right. Moving right along with item B. Physical Year 25 Classification and Compensation Study. The Board of Commissioners has asked to consider approval of an adjustment to the budgeted amount of the Physical Year 25 Classification and Compensation Study. The Physical Year 25 budget included 1.4 million for compensation increases. At the September 16th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting, the board approved additional funding for the sheriff's office. The board further inquired about a review of any additional funding needed to equalize the impact of an adjustment across all county departments. The board is asked to approve an additional $563,380 to fund compensation for the study to equalize the adjustment for all county departments. I'll open that up for discussion. Here, no discussion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm here tonight to provide just some background information on the compensation and classification study before you consider approval of this item. The compensation and classification study is a comprehensive process. It evaluates job positions and conditions with their corresponding pay level within the organization. It ensures that the job market is appropriately classified within our organization to make our salaries remain competitive and equitable within the market. The goal of the study that the county identified was for our salaries to align with the value of the job and the employees' experience in the job with the market value of the job. The original allocation or a budget that was approved, those scheduled implementation dates for those salary adjustments will be October 14th of 2024. The project included several phases. It was completed in five phases, which started at the beginning of 2024, and it included employee and department leadership involvement. The five phases included project initiation, classification review, market review. Phase four was pay plan development, and phase five was project completion. Throughout that process, they continue to work with county administration and leadership to provide input. Baker Tilly partnered with the county to identify public peer organizations that represented the county's market labor. In addition, they also received information from department leadership. Based on that information obtained, there were 13 peer organizations that were identified, and we received information from 12 of those groups. Additionally, published salary data from private sector benchmarks was also included as part of the assessment. That included information from Bureau of Labor Statistics, Salary.com, and Economic Research Institute. A lot of data was collected from those different partners to make the market assessment. And so again, tonight, the Board of Commissioners is asked to consider approval of the adjustment to the budgeted amount for the Physical Year 25 Classification and Compensation Study based off the further inquiry at the board meeting on September 16th to equalize the impact across all county departments.
Any commissioners have questions? Motion approved. And a motion made and a second. Opened up for discussion. I just had one question. That person that was hired to do that study, how much was he paid?
I don't know the exact figure off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to get that information to you tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. Any other commissioners? Can you entertain a motion?
Already have a.
Okay. All right. All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Item number four is other business. Anybody here have any other business? Here none. I'll proceed on. Our last item, item number five, is board manager and clerk's comments. This is a time set aside for the Board of County Commissioners, county manager, and a clerk to the board to report on various activity. The board may also discuss other items of interest. Start off with a clerk to the board. No comment. Counselor? No comment. Right. Commissioner Pierce?
No comment.
Commissioner Speed?
No comment.
Commissioner Shriver?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No news to folks that western part of our state is devastated. And there's not enough probably words to describe the things that they've seen and the things that they've... I think it's wonderful and amazing to see the pouring out. To go get groceries, diapers, all the human necessities, even agriculture. Hay trailers delivered from Franklin. Cool. And there's more sitting behind the trailer that can't fit in. We live in an amazing, an amazing... And I just wish I saw more of it. Wish I saw more of the... Wish we had a slideshow of pictures just from right here at home. Wouldn't that be amazing? Talk about bringing people together. The one thought that goes through my mind is, as hard as this is for them, I really believe that they... When we sit around here and we find ourselves divided over we don't like coffee, we don't like the conversation on one topic. That's where we all come from. I miss my public service years. I look forward to the volunteer time that I'm part of this opportunity to serve our fellow... Kudos to everybody. High five to everybody. Folks working around the clock. Just amazing. It feels really... Small, one grain of sand on the beach. Goodness. I had a phone call from Houston Town, Pennsylvania, son. He got turned away in North Carolina with two truckers. I cried. I found him a fire chief. Morning. We're naked. It's amazing. We can do so much. Just from states away, it's amazing. It's just coming from the eastern part of the state to the western part of the state. But that's like 400 miles. It's good. I don't want us to lose sight of people are still hurting, and there's a lot of recovery. There's a long road ahead. Going in together, I think is what... Thank you for everybody doing that. Your praises to those that you see that are. Continue to be spirited people and countrymen that we are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that time.
May I share a bone?
I would like to echo what Commissioner Shriver has said. And, you know, I think it's great EMS has been out there, sending teams out there. Sheriff's Department is instrumental in coordinating escorts for the locals to get out there. And I feel sorry for them folks out there. And the more donations that we can get, the community can get, and get distributed, the better. Just hope and pray they'll all overcome this somehow.
That it? Commissioner, back.
The support for out west. I've, since day one, been so proud of Franklin County and the people in Franklin County who have gone. I have personal friends that took their horses up and rode their horses up in the mountains. Some of them still there. You know, I have horses. And I said, oh, I wish I could get them. Too old to go and do that now. But I'm just, I'm so proud of horses. I have friends with side by sides that have gone and are still there. Just, it's just so, friends with trailers and trucks. I have one friend that's been made two big trips out there with trailers full of hay and feed. Because you know, we're horse people, so they want to take care of that type of thing. And just taking time off of work to go and their own money, you know, and it's expensive to drive up there and stuff. But then I have friends that I see that have called them and said, hey, I will pay for a tank of fuel for you to go and come. I'll pay. And I have several friends that, you know, they're helping to pay with just tanks of fuel. That's something that they need to have to go up there. I've just, I have chills thinking about all my friends that I'm so proud of, and I wish I was young enough to do it. But I'm not good old. So when they get up there, y'all don't realize when they get there with all that hay and all that feed and stuff, guess who unloads it? They do. So it's not one person driving. They have to take at least two people because they have to do the unloading. There's no one up there to do that. And when you take a big trailer full, that's a lot of work to unload that, you know, with just two people. So it's... The other thing is school visits going on. And so far, we've visited six schools in Franklin County. I've been able to go, I think, on all of them, all six of them so far. So that is something that's going on is our school visits, to go through the schools and tour those.
County manager, Captain?
Thank you, Chairman Lloyd. First, I want to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners for their support for our employees through the classification and compensation study. I very much appreciate that. Employees are working hard every day throughout the county. I'll also add my thank you to employees across the county for stepping up and helping what's going on out in the western part of our state. And it's public safety, but it's also drilling down into various other departments in county government. Public Utilities got a call. Do we have any spare parts that could help them reinstate water systems and sewer systems and those kinds of things going on? Can IT come out there and help us for a few days to man a help desk? We know this is not a short-term process. These, just the immediate recovery processes, there's going to be a lot of rebuilding. And so they are calling on us, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. The executive director is keeping counties informed and making us aware of other ways that we can help. So we anticipate days, weeks, months ahead of being able to help in various ways. Of course, we're a mutual aid county, like all counties in the state. We reach out and help others when needed. But I see faces in this audience that have been out there and had their hands right there in the situations. Very, very much appreciate that. But those folks couldn't go either without all the support and activity that's still keeping Franklin County. So again, appreciate all of that. Appreciate the commissioners' support for our employees. And that's what allows us to come to the aid of our fellow North Carolers. Thank you. Yes, that's all I have to say.
All right. Leaves me now. I'd like to echo a lot of the statements that come out here tonight in regards to the people out west. My heart, my prayers go out to those folks. It was unbelievable about what come from that and lives lost and injuries. And I don't think they're still done finding people that are missing. It's just unbelievable. I would say kudos to all the volunteers, people donating and like that. And this brings up one other thing. I was contacted by the Gold Sand and the Centreville Fire Department today. They're doing a fundraiser to raise funds for money to send out there. They're gonna have their final day of it, October 19th, having a dinner there at Centreville Fire Department. And they're also gonna have a raffle. There's our utility trailer there. I hope I have plenty of tickets to that because it's for a good cause. Anyway, moving along. Also had the honor and the privilege to go to the Walmart grand reopening the other day, about a week ago, early in the morning. And I was very impressed with the high attitude and spirit of all those employees at the Walmart. It was really a high-spirited ceremony. Haven't been to one like that ever, with that highest spirit coming from them. They were really happy about it, really a good mood. And I too have been to the school visits, six of them now. Really impressed and overwhelmed by all the square footage that we've walked and toured. It really makes me wonder sometimes how they do what they do. Lot of facilities, lot of square footage they have to take care of. It's very impressed and really noticed, like I say, the volume. And we still have ten more to go to. And they were all spotlessly clean. They really clean them. Keep a clean house there. Very, very clean. And invite the rest of the commissioners, if you can make it, please come on, join us. Of course, I know we all go work at jobs and have other things going on. I understand if you can't get there, but if you can make it, it's a pretty good tour they put on. And that concludes my report. Is anything else? Entertained? If not, I guess I'll entertain a motion.
Motion adjourned.
All right. All right. Been a motion made and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. We stand adjourned. Thank everybody for coming.